Okay. We'll call to order the meeting of the Upson County Planning Commission for Monday, April the 8th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Pitts?
Yes, sir.
Chair McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Vice Chair Dawson?
Here.
Commissioner Fallon?
Yes, sir.
You have four, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item two is the adoption of the minutes from the March 11th meeting. You had those in your packets. Do we have any corrections, additions that needs to be made? Or do I have a motion? Motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
The mover of the motion was?
Joe.
Commissioner Pitts? Thank you.
All right. Item three, old business. This is the application for special exception, SPZ 2024-02. Jessica Butler and Timothy Pryor, 1922 Lawrence Road, Parcel 005011 and 005112. This, we are going to look at the conditions that were included in the approval last meeting. And so there's not a public hearing for this, but we want to review these to make sure that this is accurate to what was requested. So do I have any comments, changes, based on what you have here in your packet?
I don't have any comments or changes at all.
So we feel like this is what we intended?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept these as the conditions that go with that approval?
I'd make a motion to accept these conditions to go with that approval.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right. So Madam Chair, the understanding is that we will now forward your motion to approve. The vote was 3-1 to recommend approval of the RV park. And these are now your recommended conditions. So that'll go to next month's Board of Commissioners. Are you good?
Good.
Thank you.
Item B is the zoning ordinance text amendment for the flex space, to add flex space wording. We, Mr. Kerr, do you have anything, or do you want me to open the public hearing? Do you have anything to offer before?
Well, as you can see, this is very brief. You've got a definition, which is the most important thing. And then originally, our discussion had been to make these changes in the C2. But when I started to look at the other zoning districts and what might be appropriate for flex space, I included the M1 and the M2. You recall that we have that development come in on Franklin Drive? And basically, they wanted to have tenants that normally we would consider light industrial, which are not really appropriate for C2. But this is not a unique concept. I've certainly worked other places where they have something similar to this. So we figured there should be a way where we can do this. So the obvious concern is the C2 zoning and allowing something that's light industrial and the sort of impacts, whether it's dust, noise, vibration, odors, chemicals, et cetera, that are normally in an industrial area, that we're basically going to sort of allow in the C2 in this type of flex space. So you see in the definition, I tried to limit it as best I could with words. There's probably going to be a little bit of judgment. And hopefully, whenever we have any landlord for these flex spaces, they're considerate of this and recognize that there are limits on the type of tenants. And maybe they even talked to us ahead of time about who might be appropriate and who wouldn't. So you'll see the main restrictions are here for the C2 zoning. So this is the definition. This will go into the definition section of the zoning ordinance, assuming, of course, the Board of Commissioners agrees. And they do know that this is coming. I talked to them when that Franklin Drive project was approved, a meeting or two ago, a couple of meetings ago, by the Board of Commissioners. They knew that this was coming. I explained that flex space is really something that we need to get a hold on if we're going to allow it, especially in the C2. So here you'll see the very minor amendments. If you're familiar with the zoning districts, the permitted uses, the permitted use by special exception, et cetera, there's a list. And so what we've done is we've added flex space with some minor modifications here. And then if people need to know what flex space is, they go to the definition. So in the C2, we have a limit of 5,000 square feet. We don't need to have large commercial, large industrial areas going into our commercial area. That's why we have M1 and M2 zoning for industrial to go into industrial areas. Then you'll see in the M1, we do allow warehouse and distribution center uses, which are prohibited in the C2. And we don't offer any square footage limits. And that's because in the M1, you already allow distribution and warehouse. And obviously, since those are allowed, why would we limit the size the way we do in the C2? And the M2, we're even a little bit more flexible, because M2 is where we put our nasty stuff in. Any industrial use that potentially would have things that you wouldn't want your kids being around, and you wouldn't want to breathe, or drive through anything, or see those sort of things. Certainly, if you want to put a flex space into that particular area, you can. And we even have fewer restrictions. The unique thing there would be potentially office and maybe even retail going into an M1 or M2 area, which traditionally, we don't think of a retail or office operation there. But this would allow the combination. And that's the important thing, is this flex space, going back to the definition, is hybrid, commercial, industrial, a mix of uses there. We don't want just warehousing. If you're just going to warehouse something, then you need to go into the M1 or M2 zoning districts. Unless, of course, it's many warehouses, which we do allow by special exception in the C2, but this is the larger scale. So it's a relatively small and tight ordinance change, but it certainly can have ramifications for people who want to be in this sort of district.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for this?
Make a motion.
Oh, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aha.
Okay. Let's see if we have any. All right. We do not have anyone signed up for that to speak for the flex space. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Okay. Any discussion on this, the wording, how this is, the definition mainly is? I know we've talked about this for a couple of meetings now, what we're trying to accomplish. Any concerns with what you see here? Okay. Do I have a motion either way to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. We will forward this to the Board of Commissioners.
All right. Item four, new business. We have an application for rezoning, REZ 2024-03, Hope of the Generations Church, represented by Pastor Scott Harper, owner, 212 McCord Road, Parcel 014053. So, Mr. Harper, if you would like to give us an overview of this, if you want to come up to one of these marks, please state your name and address.
Just so that everyone can see. It's the same presentation.
I'm not going to open it because it's...
IT timeout.
No worries.
Oh, I ain't worried. Okay, is this just slides?
Yeah.
It's not just?
No, it's just word slides. Just kind of an overview of what we're trying to do here. So my name is Chad Lambitt. Address is 350 Research Court, Fisher Corners, Georgia 30067. We are PEC. We're the civil engineer and the land planner for this project. And we are working with Hope of Generations Church, as Doug has mentioned. We are looking to rezone this property from AR to PM, a planned mixed-use development. There is, we have gotten our staff report back, and we have reviewed that. There are some questions on that staff report that also asked for a continuation for this hearing. We are hoping to request that same hearing after reviewing the questions and comments that came from that. A lot of it is to do with traffic-related issues, that we want to go back to the drawing board and see if we can provide some statistical data to be able to, you know, show everyone here, so that we can kind of support our argument a little better. So yeah, just wanted to get up here quickly and just kind of show the public and everyone else what we're proposing. We've been working with the Hope of Generations Church for several months on this. There's been a lot of effort and a lot of resources pulled into this to be able to bring this to fruition, in hopes that you can see the vision that we are putting together, and hopefully, you can see it as well. So I was just going to describe quickly the site plan, just so everyone could see what we're proposing. Our property is planned view northeast, kind of the top right corner of that picture there. It's a little bit hard to see, but it's 53.6 acres, and it's, you know, an assemblage that was originally a larger parcel, and I think it was around 120 acres, that has been broken apart over time. So this is 53 acres left on that, and it fronts on Pickard Road, I think it's McCord Road, and then 74 as well. So if you can switch to the next slide, I'll just go through, kind of go through the site plan again. Again, we are requesting a continuance, but just for everybody who put in their time to come out here tonight, just to show you what we're proposing here. So as you can see, we've got three buildings and then several cabins throughout the property, supporting parking. As I mentioned, this is a PM zoning, so planned mixed-use. The property sits within the rural communities character area. So that is a typical, you know, more on the residential side. What we're proposing here is a supported use within that character area, because it's considered a house of worship. So this is, you know, what we see as a house of worship, and it's a ministry campus, basically supporting their existing campus down the street. You'll see on the top right corner there of the, that building there, is their ministry building. That is a 38,000-square-foot ministry building. We also have a 20, I think it's 25,000-square-foot sanctuary on the south part of the site, and then just in the 12,000-square-foot admin building there. All of the cabins that you see, there's 12 cabins scattered throughout the property. Those will be part of the retreat, you know, feel. It's not a, those are not fee simple, or, you know, there's no particular residents that will live or be in those cabins. It's simply for whoever is a part of the retreat and part of the, you know, the ministry here that can, you know, enjoy these amenities that they're providing. As you can see, there's two dashed lines around the exterior of the property, one of those being a 50-foot building setback, so no building will ever be able to intrude there. And then on top of that, we have a 100-foot unstirred landscape buffer. And so what we're trying to achieve here is not to disturb or disrupt the character of the area. This is hopefully to be a community that is tucked in the woods. It kind of feels like a, kind of more of a retreat vibe. Obviously, there's cabins there that support that as well. But we understand the surrounding area is very residential, and we want to provide as much buffer as we can to that area. And so with areas that are not as densely wooded as others, you know, along that 100-foot buffer on the exterior, we were proposing to provide some sort of landscape buffer there, some sort of green, you know, large trees, or green arbor body. I think on the, if you can go to the next sheet, it just kind of shows what you can put, you know, in place of some of these other not-as-densely-wooded areas. So these trees rapidly grow, and they provide great buffer, you know, and I think that's what the community would want. So anywhere that is necessary, I think our client is willing to do that, just to provide necessary buffer from everybody else. And then just kind of going through it, additional buffers, parking, the parking is obviously a large part of this. We use the tables in your code for, I think it's a gathering space, church, recreation area. So I think what we have shown is about, I think it's 411 spaces. Those are what we consider conservative numbers, just for the, the code kind of covers a larger spectrum of school or church. This is not as large as that, but we, you know, we are compliant with the parking requirements that you have. And then lastly, I guess, obviously, the traffic is a big issue here, and that's why we are requesting a continuance, just because we understand, you know, Pickard Road is already heavy in traffic, so we want to go back to the drawing board and, again, be able to provide data that supports what we're trying to do here. So we're not, we're not trying to push forward with this tonight. We just wanted to present. Obviously, a lot of people are here in support and opposition, so we wanted to at least give everybody a brief overview of what we're doing before we come back next month. So that's it.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Kerr, if we can have your, I believe we're going to have a parcel of your presentation pending.
All right. As we've already discussed, I think we're probably going to get a continuance tonight, and we may have quite a bit of additional and new information, maybe modified information at the next meeting. So I'm not going to go, this is always a summary of the report. There's information in your staff report. I will not be going over, and I will even be going over less tonight, because again, I just hit the highlights, the most important information, and then we'll be open for the public hearing. So I'll just hit the highlights, maybe fill in, and a little bit more meat what you just heard, but a lot of the basics are in my presentation, too. All right. So the owner is a different person. We've got the church that is approaching the county, but again, they haven't purchased the property yet. So they certainly need to determine whether this is going to be approved or not. This current zoning is agriculture-residential, and you'll see in your report, I'm not going to go to any of the graphics, but you'll see in your staff report that the majority of the zoning in this area is AR. However, in the intersection there with Fire Tower Road and 74, you do, you have that little cluster of commercial. You've got Hope of the Generations Hotel there in. Across from that, you've got the restaurant. And then across from that, you've got, you all may know this person better than I do, but there's some nondescript commercial, sort of a wrecked building. So you get a little cluster of commercial there at that intersection. There are, the purpose of the PM, because you, we haven't had a new PM probably in the time that I've been here, other than our manufactured home parks. The purpose is that this is a unique development, doesn't really fit into the typical zoning districts. So we have two zoning districts that help us out. One is PR, which is primarily residential, and then this is PM, which is a mixed use. You have things in here that are residential, which you've got office uses. We're told there's going to be some recreation, and certainly, there's a school component to the church. So they've got a mix of uses, and with the discussions we had early on with the church, it's my opinion that PM was probably the best zoning district for them in this particular case. So there are very loose guidelines that are in the zoning district for PM. And basically, you're creating the zoning district. So that's why the plan that you have before you, and hopefully, some refined plans, physical plans, the graphic plans. And then there's also a booklet, some information, a statement of intent that you're also supposed to have, and that sort of lays out in a more textual way, sort of the zoning district and as it would be described. So we can anticipate that that statement of intent should be coming to you at the next meeting, echoing some of the things we already know and that are presented into the physical plans, but we have text as well as the graphic plans that we've got. So PM is a unique animal, but that's on purpose. As you've heard, this is 53.69 acres, give or take, very heavily wooded. We do have a single-family residence and a manufactured home on the property. I did call it to the attention of the church that these were code violations, and they have been very excellent in cooperating with our code enforcement officers. The photographs you got in your report are the before. I will not go into the today. Our code officer went out today, just if we were going to go through the full presentation to show you that things are better than they were. So the photos that are in your staff report, it's not that bad anymore. The church has been doing a lot of work to clean it up, and certainly, I anticipate that hopefully, it'll even be more clean, and maybe we'll even have new photos next month. So there is a code violation that I just wanted you to be aware of. This property is also subject to the Gateway Corridor overlay, since it partially touches the corridor overlay. Should be relatively minor impacts, as you see in the maps that you've got. There's not a lot of frontage there in terms of the landscape requirement. They already exceed the landscape requirement, so that's not going to affect them. And any signage that they're going to have will, probably that might be the major impact, perhaps. But they're aware, and will certainly look at the project towards the end to make sure that they're consistent with the Gateway requirements. You see that there's the administration building, the church, the school cabins, and the parking spots. You heard Chad talk about the numbers. There they are, they're again in your staff report. Again, the area is surrounded with AR. There's that C2 at the intersection with the hotel, restaurant, and the other miscellaneous commercial, I'll call it. We do have a description of what's appropriate in the AR and the PM. And Chad referenced the comp plan. That's also in your staff report. This character area is rural community. Probably, if we were going to do a plan, a local plan for this, we'd certainly talk about the church as a component of the community, because of course, they're looking to move into this area, but they're already in the Thurston area and other, other properties. There are also goals and strategies in the comp plan. This proposal is not contrary to any of those. Also, every rezoning has the standards that you're required to have by state law and our local ordinance. I'm not going to go that far into it. I'm pretty, this will be the end of my presentation here, where we talk about the analysis and what I think we still need. So similar to other large projects, to be looked at, what we feel we need at the planning level, and sometimes what the applicant feels is necessary, aren't always the same. So we come up with a list of questions. You remember Legacy Ranch, we had similar issues with them. If you look at the maps, to me, there's some confusion. I won't go into the details, but there's some conflicting information there that they're asked to clear up. Also, it's not clear how many people are we talking on a day-to-day basis, between staff, faculty, and the students that approach? We certainly want to understand, you know, how many folks are going to be there. And while we see that the cabins are there, we don't have any description of the use in text of how those cabins are going to be used. So we would expect to see something in the statement of intent, or whatever document they want to provide us, the plan for the project, what are the function purposes, et cetera. I will note that they do exceed the 1,008 square footage that we would have in AR if that was the zoning. You may recall that on that other project, Legacy Ranch, that was an issue, that the Board of Commissioners was very firm on the minimum size. As you heard, discussed earlier, we probably want some more traffic information, especially the access. I mean, they've got contact with three different roads. They've decided, for whatever reason, unknown to us, to, at least in this original plan, have one ingress/egress point. If that's what they want, number one, of course, they'll talk to the road department about that. But this has impacts and issues related to it, as opposed to two access points or three. And we'll need to understand that, where they're coming from and why that, those were, that's the choice that they made. We have minimal information on potable water. So we're getting, just again, planning-level information, what do their expected demands, you know, what's the well capacity on site? I'm assuming there's at least one well. There might be two. We're not sure. We just don't have that information. What would the demand be, and can those existing wells meet the demand, or would they have to get additional water sources? And the same thing for wastewater. As you know, for instance, the Legacy Ranch, there was a major effort for them to figure out their sanitary sewer. I mean, we're talking from the time it got approved over a year, working with the state to figure out where their wastewater would go. So septic system, actually, not sanitary sewer. Also, on the staff analysis, we asked about whatever the security measures are going to be, the use of the facilities. We don't really have a description of, you know, the day-to-day use. Certainly, just living in the community, we understand how this church functions and some of the major things that they do, but we don't have a description for this particular site, especially maybe even related to how the other sites that they've got. You know, are some of those other functions going to move from the sites they're at in other parts of the county to this location? Or are they going to just expand the uses they have there and at this location? So we need a more robust description of development and how it's going to function. And there's also that home we referenced. We don't have any information about how that will be used in the project, and I don't think it even shows up on the plan. And then going through the specific PM requirements, the summary of intent is necessary. We did not receive that document. That's a text document that explains the overall approach. In this case, I would certainly encourage it to have the detail that we're looking for, the things that you would like to see. And that would include the traffic information, utility information, and minimal topographic information. We don't need detailed topographic information, but we certainly need to know the basics, especially if there are any impacts that we need to be aware of, especially drainage. You see in the staff report, they are not in the flood plain, so that's nothing that we've got to worry about. And Madam Chair, I think for purposes of our abbreviated discussion of the project tonight, that is the staff report.
Okay. All right. So having, having gone through that with the additional information that's asked for, I really don't want to open the public hearing. I'd rather have everything, let everybody hear that, come back next month, continue it, come back next month, and reopen the public hearing then. Any discussion along that?
I agree. Indeed, the total plan, so that people here will know what the total plan is before we start closing, closing, considering.
Exactly. Okay. So do I have a motion to continue this, as requested by the applicant also, to the May meeting, to hopefully have all of the requested information, additional detail for that meeting, so that we can have the full overview, understand what the project is, and have our public hearing?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for that? Do you have a motion for that?
Make a motion to continue.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Now, before we dismiss this, obviously, we have my questions that I came up with, where I indicated to the applicant, if maybe y'all had questions that I didn't even think of. So if you don't have those now, please get them to me as soon as you can, and I will forward them to the applicant, so that they can address your other concerns, other than what was in the staff report.
Yeah, and I was just going to add to it. We received this document, this from, from the applicant before the meeting, so if we can go through this, if we have any questions, let's try to get those back to Mr. Courier by early next week, to give them plenty of time to address those. I feel like what you've asked for is pretty much in line with what we would come up with, but if there is something somebody sees, please, please send that back to him, so we can get that included.
Madam Chair, for the benefit of the audience, that next meeting will be May 13th, same time, 5:30 in this room. So that's May 13th of next month. We are continuing this hearing to that day.
Did everybody hear that? May 13th, okay. All right. And we will keep this list, if you're back next, next here, next, next month, if there's other people here, we'll get them to sign this list, but we'll go down this list. If you're not here, then we'll move to the next person. All right. All good? Mr. Courier, good? Okay. Awesome. I know there's a large group of people here. If you guys, we have a couple more things to take care of. If you guys want to, us to give you five minutes and you can leave, or if you want to stay, that's fine. I'm not saying you do or you don't, but I want to give you the opportunity. I'd rather do it now and have people not leaving while we're trying to finish. Yeah, you can sign up next, you can sign up next meeting. We'll have that back out.
We have roads somewhere.
I thought I was going to be talking to Haley, and she'd be here, so she bailed on me.
Supposed to be a whole team?
No, she, I'll be, I'll be the most representative, not me, than Kim Wood in our office.
Lambeth, yep. L-A-M, the ETH. Yeah, thank you guys so much for the time. I know you guys, it's almost a thankless job, but we appreciate you.
We thank Dave all the time.
Yeah, that's great. You don't like him, Dave?
All right.
Thank you. All right. Item five, other business, there is none. Item six, planning commissioner issues and announcements. Anyone have any?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Item seven, secretary's issues and announcements.
Sorry, I have a list.
I was going to say, nobody else has anything, because Doug's taking all of our, all of our time.
I'll make them relatively quick. All right. Tomorrow night, we also have a busy meeting in this room at 6 o'clock. As you recall, I've informed you before that Mr. Tavani has filed an appeal of your decision. First time I've ever had one of those, an appeal of the planning commission's decision. Now, the interesting thing about his appeal is he actually has added more landscaping. So I'm not sure it's really a pure appeal, because you saw one thing, and the Board of Commissioners is going to see something else. And basically, what he's done is tried to put the 30-foot landscaping in the corners on Crest Highway, and then put 10 feet up to the entranceway or the driveway off of Crest Highway. Now, he hasn't changed the canopy, so that still is a 14-foot variance. So anyway, that will be heard tomorrow. He wanted a postponement, a continuance, but I don't believe it's going to grant him. So I think he's going to be sending another representative he's not able to attend. And then you'll remember the special exception for the Bissell Family Cemetery, you know, that was a fairly easy thing, and that'll be going to tomorrow night's meeting also. We talked last time about the Vincent classes. I understand there's at least two of you interested, but the timing just didn't work out. The chair understands that the 104 class will probably be offered later in the year. We just don't have a commitment when, so if those of you who are interested in the more advanced class, I probably will attend that one, because I've never, I've been to the 101 and the 102 with you or your predecessors, just to see what's being taught, and so I've been to those classes, but I've never been to the 104, and I don't even know what the 103 is. So...
And 104 is a brand-new class, correct?
Exactly. It's more advanced, and Chrissy and I are certainly professional friends, and I like the way she teaches her classes. I just don't know what the content of this one will be. So for those of you who might be interested in the 104, we've planned at the 101 and the 102, and then, of course, the 101s will be coming up too. And, you know, whenever I get those announcements, I send it all, I forward it to y'all, so you'll find out when those dates are, and just get back with me. And if you recall, it's fully paid for by the county. We do budget for that. If you have a meal, if they don't feed you, and I just don't remember, it's been so long, you can be compensated for that, and if you drive your personal vehicle, if we don't travel in the county vehicle together, as we have in the past, you can get reimbursed for that mileage. All right. Some other issues came up since your last meeting, that we just, maybe we sort of discuss and think, find out what everybody thinks. And letter C is receiving the applications at the time I receive them. As you know, the staff reports, you get them at the very latest hour, or sometimes 2:00 in the morning, at the earliest hour. And I understand that's not acceptable, but, you know, you can imagine this staff report and then doing the PowerPoint, we're literally talking days of work, when you add the hours together. And on a traditional day, I don't have the time to do that. I just, I have to take a weekend, because then I'm not interfered, there's no phone calls, there's nobody to bother me, and I just hit it, and it can get done, but I need a weekend. So that explains why the staff report's happening. For those of you who've been on the board for a while, those last, I'm going to say two and a half to three years, Upson County's just changing. We are not what we were the first nine years I was here. We were just slow in not a lot of cases, and we almost never saw crowds like this, and we're seeing these more and more at our meetings with more and more controversial projects and bigger projects. So the idea was that even if I can't get the staff report to you any earlier, would you like to receive the application as soon as I get it, so that you've got it early? Yes?
I wouldn't mind that, and more, more for the reason of, when something's coming up, and people see that sign go up, they start calling and asking, you know, questions. And it doesn't happen every month, but it does happen. I would feel a lot better to be able to say, yeah, I know a little bit right now, I don't know all of it, but that, to me, that's better than saying, I have a clue what you're talking about. Where, where did you see it?
I think we get a consensus decision that...
And I'll be honest with you, I'm fine if you send, send us all a message. I know it takes time to deliver that stuff, or whatever. If you're going to email it, scan it, email it, whatever. Joel?
Call me, I'll pick mine up.
And he's very good about that, aren't you?
So if you can scan it, email it, that, that's fine.
Yes.
That works.
Absolutely. We will make that change, and that's, like I said, I scanned it in, I've already got y'all on, you know, Upson County Planning Commission list, and just hop it to you and you get it. All right. We will make that change, so you'll get that as soon as I get it. Okay, next one. We've discussed this in the past a little bit, ex parte communications. Basically, the reason why you have public hearings in a meeting here is so that the public and everybody concerned can hear what all the information, all the data is. Ex parte communications are when you have somebody outside of the meeting talking to you. Now, does everybody get that same information that you got, or that same opinion, or whatever it was, or idea put into your head? So generally speaking, the best thing to do, especially with things that, when you're just making a recommendation, that's not as bad as when you're making the final decision. So there's really not a problem. And again, different communities are going to have different standards. I have certainly been at conferences where they talked about, no, you don't talk to anybody at all, and I've heard at other ones, well, yeah, just, they're your neighbors, and you're going to run a small town, you're going to run into people. So that's like this. I mean, you're not making the final decision. If somebody wants to talk to you, lobby you, give you information of their opinion, I don't really see the problem with that. I think the issue is, but you got information nobody else got, or an opinion nobody else got, and that doesn't mean you have to reveal names, but I had communication with somebody, this was the information I received, and I just want y'all to know. That's particularly important in the decisions that are final. When y'all are reviewing subdivision ordinances, at least for the current time, variances, you're it. That's, you are the judge in this case, in a very semi-formal way. So I would suggest, and again, either when it's a subdivision or a variance, do one of the two things. If you're going to talk to somebody, or they, they talk to you, all right, if you can talk to them, I think you need to come to this board and say, hey, I talked to somebody, the information I heard was X, and I just want y'all to know, you know, and let each one of you evaluate whether that information's important or not. The other option is just to say, I'm sorry, but this is sort of a quasi-judicial decision. We are the final decider, sort of like a judge, so I really shouldn't talk to you on this particular issue. Other issues, you know, variant, variances, no. Special exceptions, rezonings, yes, because I'm just making recommendations, so, you know, we don't have the final say. You know, if you, if you want to get something more formal into your rules of procedure about communications, ex parte communications, we could do that, consult with an attorney. Is this an even year? Yes, it is. So I think in June or July, whatever month that is, we do open up, you know, every other year, we open up your bylaws, your rules of procedure, to make changes that we feel necessary. If you want to have more specific guidelines about ex parte communications, we can certainly do that. And just, and we'll have judicial review, and well, at least lawyer review, and have them decide what we should put in there. And then, with the RV campground, concern was expressed, as you know, we discussed, I think, at the meeting, at an RV campground, you're allowed to stay there for as long as 180 days. Now, I think most of you, or a big chunk of you, were on the planning commission when that ordinance was adopted. I don't know what you thought about the 180 days at the time. I believe there was some Board of Commissioners who had some opinions, and that's sort of a number that they favored. I'm not sure if they changed the number that you forwarded or not, but for purposes of RV parks, it's in the RV ordinance, 180 days stay. Now, it's 180 days a year, you can't do more, and you can't take, oh, okay, well, I'll do the last half of this year and the half of next year. It's in a 12-month cycle. So it's buffered on, on either side. You're not going to put a whole year in one place. And it also talks about, in the ordinance, not being able to change lots or parking spaces in that RV park, and that counts. No, you can't be there more than...
You can't leave more, you can't leave for a day.
Now, you could go to another park somewhere else. I mean, we're only going to police this so much, and if you're that desperate to live in your RV in an RV park, okay, we're not going to chase you, we're not in the county to different parks, but in any one. And you've seen one of the conditions that's in the recommendations is that they keep the registry. Now, the registry is referenced in our zoning ordinance, it's just not necessarily required, which maybe that's a change we need to make in the future, but with conditional approval, you can recommend, recommend that registry be kept, and the Board of Commissioners can require it when they finalize the conditions, and that'll be available to our code officers. I know there was a concern expressed about people living there, staying there beyond 180. Well, we'll have a way to audit them, and if they're not keeping a clean book that our code officers can read, then they're going to have to change something, because we've got to understand what's in your book, and you have to keep it. Now, do we have a lot of these facilities? No, we don't have a lot of campgrounds around, but we do have a few, and obviously, all the ones that we have are legal non-conforming, you know, they existed before your RV ordinance, so notice of some issues that came up. We definitely have one change in procedures. I'll certainly get any other opinions on any of those. Yes, sir?
Speak to me about that parcel that's in my package, the Black House at the old Rock Ranch.
Is that what that is? Or is that, is that the house?
Did everybody have that?
I think I got that.
I think you're special.
Let me look at what you got.
They're not special. I don't know which one it is.
Oh, what you got?
I'm sorry you missed...
Well, this, this might be one of the benefits of picking up information from us, is, is you get swift, just for your information, the, as I said, we really haven't heard anything from Legacy Ranch until the, the special exception and all that large, you know, the basketball arena, the dormitory, even the sanctuary, the chapel, and the other buildings. We haven't heard anything on those. There was some information coming, that they had worked with the state and gotten permission to have a, basically a super-septic system for the development, but that, they've only gotten that in the last few months. So that's as far as they've gotten in terms of the big project. What you might have gotten is that they've come in for a permit to renovate and fix up one of the houses that's already on the property. So somehow, Joel, I think you just got that attached there, was, we do have a permit in where they're fixing up one of the houses, and somehow that just got into the...
Is that, is that the Black House? They're going to renovate that?
It's ancient.
Yeah, that's one of the, that's the first permit we heard, that I'm asking for.
It belongs to Mitchell Marcus, Marcus is his last name. You know Marcus.
He owns the Black House?
Well...
Carolyn Black?
Hey, it says, yeah, Kathy, Kathy Dan T. as trustee, Mitchell Robert Marcus, and Jane Patton, and Mitchell Robert Marcus. He's always lived at this house there. He's been at the...
Blew away, but, I mean, she didn't live in there.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is not Ms... I think this is the house that's next to, is that the school building?
That's the old house back off, and going, if you go on towards Marshall, it will be on the right, on the right-hand side road back in McConnell, that's probably...
That's the one Marcus lived in.
Marcus lived...
Right. It's not Ms. Black's house that's across the road.
Okay, I'm sorry, but it was at one time the Black House.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This one.
Okay. All right. We're square. All right. All right. Anything, huh?
No, I got, that's it for me.
You got any other, you got any other special gifts in that pack? All right. Anything else other, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six, eight.